Okay, I want to welcome you all to our August 26, 2024 regular board meeting. And we will start with a roll call. Lee.
Here.
Mel.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Lyerly.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
Gerlach.
Here.
Crossen.
Here.
Okay, all board members are present. Mr. Becker is going to join us remotely tonight. We also joined at the table by a member of our ICSC. Would you please introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is Andres Mora. I'm a senior at Preble High School and I'm the Inter-Cities Student Council President.
Very good, thank you. All right, would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, universal liberty and justice for all.
All right, would someone like to read the mission statement? Go ahead, Brian.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. "We, the members of the Green Bay area Public School District, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of Northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Menominee and Ho-Chunk nations and the current homeland of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the twelve diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities." All right, next we have an open forum. We're going to... Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's just, that's the heading. So first, we're going to hear from the Inter-Cities Student Council member.
All right, so we had our first meeting last week, so we were able to gather some good news from all the schools. So East Senior Sunrise is taking place. This is their first year partaking in the tradition. Their first cross-country meet is Wednesday, and homecoming is taking place on September 28. At Preble, we had a freshman tailgate in the first home football game on August 23, as well as the stadium rededication ceremony, which I saw Laura spoke there. Just seems nice.
It was beautiful. It was a beautiful night.
It's a nice stadium. And then boys soccer, girls golf, swimming, and volleyball have started. And then we have a new football coach, student council advisor, and athletics director. And then at Southwest, they have their first home football game and tailgate, and tennis is doing well. And then over at East, the first volleyball game is August 27, which is tomorrow, versus New London. And then Link Crew is doing well with the start of the new year. And over at J-Doll, they had their first, their open house on August 21.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next we have our public forum. We, as far as I know, we have just one speaker, but if there's anyone else who wants to speak... Hey Karen. Fill out one of these pink forms and get it to Kinsey. So, so the person we have is Misty. Koka? Kocha, okay. Yeah, just come on up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Okay. Do you have anything else to say? Okay. Okay, we can't, we can't do a discussion here during open forum, but you please stay and, 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 and for as much of our meeting as you'd like. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, under discussion is the legislative update. Brian, did you have anything to say?
I just have a verbal for you tonight. I have four bills that I looked at that were coming up. I look at different education groups to see what's coming up. The first one, there's a Senate bill. The Senate Education Committee passed the so, it's a parental bill of rights, which makes it easier to censor educators and sue school districts. It passed the Assembly in 2024, and this has to do with curriculum and library materials. And polls show that more than 70% of parents oppose book bans and other extreme policies that this bill would encourage. That's Senate Bill 489, Assembly Bill 510. Also, Senate Bill 833 and Assembly Bill 919 is the PELLS Holocaust Education Resource Center. This is to encourage the Nathan and Esther PELLS Holocaust Education Center in Wisconsin, which provides programming free of charge for schools to comply with the 2021 Act 30, requiring education on the Holocaust, and Wisconsin is often recognized as a leader in the Holocaust education. So there's Assembly Bill 527, Senate Bill 506. This is going to deal with special ed, excuse me, special education reimbursement. We changed the special ed reimbursement rate to 90% rather than 33.3% rate for 2023, 2024. Voucher schools, I believe, get it at 90% for special education reimbursement. And then there was one more bill that was coming down or coming through. It's the School Psychologist Loan Program. It's Assembly Bill 234 and Senate Bill 241. Senate Committee has held a public hearing on this bill, which would create a school psychologist loan program for graduate students pursuing a school psychologist career. They could receive a loan of up to $10,000 annually for up to three years, and 25% of the loan would be forgiven for each school year the recipient is employed as a school psychologist in an urbanized county or rural area. So there's shortages of school psychologists as well as their spots. So it looks like there's some policies that might help with some of that shortage, so.
Okay. Go ahead, Mel.
Brian, the, the one about the reimbursement for special education, at the end you gave a date and you said 2023, 24. Did, is that what you meant?
Yeah, so what I said was the reimbursement rate for the state is 33.3% as of 2023, 2024. So, and for, like I said, for vouchers, it's 90%. And this is just trying to get that to line up the same.
Okay. Anybody else? Andrew?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we're moving on to referendum update. And Kale will be joining us at the table to take us through that. This is always my favorite part of these meetings. Sorry.
All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. You're kind of new to the district. Can you, can you introduce yourself again to people in case they're, they're seeing you for the first time, which might be possible?
Yeah, my name is Kale Polczynski. I'm the COO, started July 1st. So kind of prefacing our 22 referendum project update, I'm still a little bit getting up to speed, but I'm feeling pretty comfortable with what we're presenting here. If there's questions I can answer, certainly I can get back with our team, whether that's facilities, technology, or other, and certainly get back to the board. But to date, I feel I have a pretty good grasp of, of what we have, and I think I can give you a pretty good update tonight of where.
Okay.
So as I said, we'll be going through the 22 referendum projects. I won't go through the complete list here that you see on this first slide. These were projects that were completed prior to the summer of '24. So you're probably aware of most of these projects and their completion. But just as a little reminder, some of the projects from the 22 referendum that had previously been completed. The list you see here is projects completed summer of '24, some as early as a week ago. A few of these I'll highlight. East renovation in addition. As you will see this Friday, I believe, on the open house walkthrough. There will be some punchless items, some equipment installs, some site work that's still being completed, but we do have full occupancy. It is a usable space to staff and students, but you will see some work still ongoing there throughout the next couple of weeks. Another one with the Preble Stadium, again, punchless items, as you see the site still developing. So as you see this project list, we all, they are contractually complete through the, the city and occupancy and usability. But again, with contractors closing out contracts and punchless items, any minor corrections, things like that, you may see through, through the fall. We do have quite a few on the in-progress. So this is a combination of a few things. Some of these are closing out as we speak. Some of these will be moved into the complete list as early as next week. But I wanted to be fair to the projects and to where we currently stand on some of these. So I'll just run through these, and again, if there's questions at the end, I can certainly answer any specifics. Edison Auditorium is a good one that is scheduled to be complete on 9/6. That is really just having to do with audio in that auditorium. So still usable, but the upgrades to the audio are still going on. There's two playgrounds, Dan's and Sullivan, that will be completed this fall. So those are in progress as well. Lombardi Chiller, I will say, is in progress, but that will be completed at 20, summer of '25. So although it's in progress, the remainder of the project will have to wait for a complete chiller install next summer. Lombardi and King is a little unique. We combine those two. King, as you will see, the solar and the lighting is complete. Lombardi lighting is complete. And this October, the, the remaining portion of the project will be the solar array going on top of Lombardi. So that's why that project is still in progress. The Preble renovation addition has a revised construction completion date in January. So that'll be ongoing during the school year. Southwest Auditorium Sound, that is another one similar to Edison, just an audio upgrade that will be complete September 6, much like Edison. West renovation, I'll go into a little detail with that one for the interior renovation. The auditorium, receiving a big facelift, is scheduled to be complete November 22. After talking with that staff, that was planned to avoid any interference with the winter concert December 3. So they'll give that group about a week to practice in the new facility and then hold their concert in December. The gym is being closed out this week and usable. That's mainly for the scoreboard and the video board update. Remaining of that gym will be occupiable. Weight room, we're waiting for equipment at this point, scheduled to be installed September 3rd and 4th. And then that will be usable completely in the weight room. And that should wrap up West interior renovation. West Stadium, as you'll see, lots of site work still moving there. Very small site, very tight logistics. That is still scheduled. We are planning, the football team is planning to practice there, I believe, tonight. They were planning to practice, so the field is usable, the new game turf field. And that site will be holding home on September 20. There will still be plenty of work to do after that, as we work towards completion later this fall. Speed safety signs, I will note, that's a little bit out of our control. We're working with the city. I believe we have posted now construction progress. I'd have to ask Vicki where that was posted. I can't remember, or Lori. It's on, I believe there's a tracking piece.
It's somewhere on the city website, and I can dig that out for the board.
So the city is going to keep us up to date on that project as well. And then finally, I just wanted to reiterate some of the projects then that would be coming for summer of '25. Actually, I'll say, starting sooner than that in regards to design, engineering, project bidding, but being implemented mostly in summer of '25 to wrap up our 22 referendum. We'll have a Franklin Auditorium renovation, HVAC work at Howe, J-Doll, and Sullivan. Southwest Gym Forum bleachers, Washington sound panels in the orchestra room. That work will take place during the school year, but not interrupt any class. Washington roof, which is currently being designed and ready to bid out to get some favorable numbers in preparation for the spring. And then design work at ASB Edition has already began and likely breaking ground prior to spring of '25. So with that, if there's any other questions, I can try to answer them.
James and Rick, and then Brian.
Thanks for the update. Can you back up a slide, please? Um, you, the timeline that you communicated around the Preble renovation in addition, is that the original timeline? Because I was under the impression that they would be done this fall. Were there delays?
Yes, I don't have the exact, I believe it was 20 working days delayed. So during construction, as they demoed the existing building to tie in for the addition, there was some unforeseen conditions that changed steel size. It was only a few inches, but delayed our steel manufacturing. It did not cost the district anything because the steel was not produced yet. But it had to get re-engineered before it was built. That pushed the project back about 20 days, working days. So that the new completion date did get pushed into January.
Yeah, regarding the West Stadium, I was the same question about the timeline. When was it supposed to have been completed? And, and what specifically is, is holding it up if it is in fact being held up?
That I would have to get the original completion date. I'm sorry, I did not note that down. I know it has been delayed due to weather. As everyone probably recalls, it was a very wet spring with the size of that site. That really slowed down production. Other than that, that, that's really the main delay at that site is just the mobility of that site after it was completely opened up and all that rain. Battling that weather, we just didn't have anywhere to go with that. So that was delayed due to site logistics and weather.
Brian.
If it's okay. The speed safety signs, those are the crosswalk beacons, correct? They're not speed signs, but they're more for... Correct, correct. And just an observation that I've seen from the conference and with, with my officiating, the other schools have really stepped up to help West with that delay in opening up their stadium between Southwest and East, hosting home games for West for varsity games, and other ADs in the area stepping up similar to what happened at Preble last year. It's good to see the cooperation with the different groups to make sure that these kids can still get their games. And obviously, they'd rather be at home with their shiny new stadium. But it's good cooperation, again, both within our district and outside of our district to get these kids participating in sports. I, I only know football, but I'm assuming the same thing's happening with soccer and other sports that are impacted at West. So good job to the people doing that.
James?
I wanted to wait my turn to come back around, but the Preble renovation, just to follow. And you might not be the correct person, and Vicki, if you want to, what's the nature of the impact to students, right? You have a, a construction happening right there in Commons out there. What's, what's the impact of that very occupied school, or when it comes to space, lunch services, and things like that?
So I have been in communication with the principal on this, trying to get myself up to speed as well. Although not ideal, you know, taking up parking spaces and then obviously inside the school impacting that. But logistically, they're able to open up enough of the common space to at least be functional during that time. If we can get that occupancy earlier, at least in the Commons, to make that a larger space. And really what that is, we're increasing size, right? Although we, we are impacting some existing space. And then on second floor of the additional classroom space, that's again, all additional space. So we're making accommodations now, not ideal, but it is working, and we'll get that turned over if we can earlier.
Andrew? Andrew, can you hear me?
Yeah, I think I was double, double muted with my headset. Yes, thank you. So absolutely appreciate the cooperation and other schools being able to have West host some, some games there, and I'm very grateful for that. At the same time, I guess I'd like to know with the, the kind of money that we're spending on this, and I'm speaking about, you know, contractors getting huge, huge money for this. Did we leave no stone unturned to do it faster as far as, as far as draining? I guess I don't, I need to know that West didn't, you know, get the short end of the stick here on this because that, that perception is, has been out there at times. And I don't know, I get the feeling if there were louder voices, would they have been pushed harder to get it done? Or did these contractors go not just meet, but go above and beyond to try to get the water situation fixed and drained and so forth?
I can't speak to everything that happened prior to myself starting. But what I have seen is, so with these contracts, weather typically referred to as like act of God clause, there really is limited repercussion for one, kind of what we can force a contractor to do due to official weather delays. What I have seen is significant dollars put into, you know, whether that's digging pits, pumping water, extra hours overtime, trying to address a site that does not have stormwater. Essentially, movement during that construction not built into the plan. So, you know, we can push, and from what I can see, we did push contractors to try to dry out that site as much as possible. But again, with the engineering of that, you're really constructing a new site on top of an existing one. So trying to get that water off that site while reconstructing essentially your stormwater is a very difficult task. So while I can't speak to the effort taken, from when I started, I, I can say that there was efforts that probably cost our contract, contractors dollars outside of what we're paying them. And I'm not trying to say that, you know, people are losing money on this project, certainly not. But the effort was definitely there, trusted contractors on that site that I've worked with for years too, and seeing that effort. Whether that's moving the site around, again, pumping water and trying to avoid delays. From what I have seen, I believe that effort was there.
Okay, I just, I, okay, I think, I don't, I, contractor is not expected to, to control the weather. But I think, you know, sometimes, sometimes the weather smiles on you, and maybe they finish earlier. And then there's a little more profit fair and square, and then sometimes you're putting a little bit more in with, with drainage and stuff. So all I ask is a, you know, is, is extra effort. And if you're saying that there is, you know, extra effort to try to get things done as quickly as possible instead of just, well, we have to wait for natural drainage, then, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kale. Okay, I have a couple of questions. The West Roof Project, is that part of the roof at West or is that entire?
Just a portion of the roof, yeah.
Okay. And then the Lombardi King Solar Array. When, when will the, at what point will the district start seeing some of the benefit of that? As far as, you know, tapping into our, our electrical, like, I don't even know what the words, correct words are. When will we start, when will that be operational?
King, it already is operational.
Okay.
Lombardi, I don't have that completion date with me. But as soon as that solar array is installed, we should, similar to King, that transfer over is fairly quick. So, yeah, we're already seeing that at King.
My understanding is that all of King's electricity needs will be covered with this solar array. Is that correct?
I need to get clarification on that. I'm not fully up to speed on that yet, so I can't answer that tonight.
I want to say all of it and then part of Lombardi's as well. So, but I'm, I'm not, not exactly sure about that, so. Okay. And then finally, I just, I know Rick and Lynn, who all made it to Aldo to do the ribbon cutting. Yeah. Yeah, no, it was, it was a beautiful event and just a reminder of, of all the things that this district can do when our, our citizens support our referendums. And, and, you know, seeing all those families and kids and staff, enjoying that and celebrating that was very... It was fun. It was a fun event. So go ahead, Brian.
It was great to see how the students designed the playground at Aldo. And then it's kind of tied into the referendum with the lunchroom improvements there. It, it's that, like you said, it's that partnership with it, but to have the, the students design the playground, guy stinks. That was like 110 heat index today, so I'm not sure if they were able to play on it on the first day. But to see that and have the kids go out for it is fantastic. So, thank you.
I'm, you know, as we get closer and closer to the November election and our, our next referendum, I think making, reminding people of the link between a referendum and these projects and how they benefit our children every single day. And, you know, and reminding people of the connection between student achievement and good facilities is, is, is this kind of going to become part, I think, of our, of our normal conversation. I think it, it should, I think it should always be part of our conversation when we talk about these really large projects. And you get the, you get to shepherd all these. It's not a, it's not a small thing. It's a huge thing to have these many projects going on in a district our size. It's, it's a lot to ask. And so, anyway, I love these, like I said, I love these updates, so.
Yeah, I I think too, you know, as I'm here for the remainder and hopefully as we have a twenty four referendum update along with our twenty two referendum update. You know, I could be more knowledgeable to the questions on this, but the team here to be able to pull off the projects they did this summer, along with the many other ones I did not mention in our normal capital planning. Just a shout out to those teams in a shortened summer, which is also difficult navigating summer school and our early start. That week is really important to these contractors and to our staff to get buildings ready. And the accommodations they were able to make to get to this point is a very special feat. So now I hope we're even busier next summer, but this is a good kind of display of what we're capable of and getting these size of projects completed.
Yeah, it's it's a huge lift and I really appreciate it. So, all right. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to hear from
I'll take this one if you want.
You'll take it?
Yeah. That was a good lead in into the preparation for the twenty twenty four referendum. And we are joined tonight by Peter Leatherman from Morris Leatherman Company. That's a group that we had do the initial polling to determine whether going after the referendum in November was feasible. So Peter, if you are available, there you are. Peter's gonna run us through the results.
Excellent. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. I always love, I I grew up just north of Green Bay, so I always love to work in Wisconsin. I want to share my screen. Does everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Yes, excellent. Okay, to review with everybody what we undertook for the district, we spoke with we spoke with six hundred twenty five residents in the district, six hundred twenty five samples projectable to plus or minus four percent in ninety five out of a hundred cases. The size of the sample determines the margin of error, not the percent of the population. So a six twenty five in the Green Bay area public schools in the Brown County or in the state of Wisconsin is going to be plus or minus four percent. Interviews were conducted between June twenty fifth and July tenth. The average interview time was seven minutes. And once they realized that we weren't going to vote or ID them, they were more than happy to talk with us. We had a non-response rate of only six and a half percent. Putting up some demographics, demographics are twofold, not only for us to look at updated census information and make sure we're within the margin of error of the census, realizing the census itself has a margin of error. But then we can also look at differences and attitudes and opinions between groups. So the first set looks at how long has the resident lived in the school district? Thirty five percent have been there for ten years or less. Well, thirty seven percent have been in the district for more than twenty years. Typical resident comes in right at about sixteen years of residency. Sixteen percent have a preschooler or an infant. Twenty eight percent have a school age child attending the Green Bay area public schools. And then sixty seven percent are empty nesters and empty nesters does not imply an age. It's just lack of presence of a child. So we could have a twenty four year old in here without a child. They're labeled as an empty nester for the purpose of the results. Thirty eight percent were renters with twenty seven percent indicating they own a home under a hundred and fifty thousand and thirty five percent owning a home above a hundred and fifty thousand. Education achievement, thirty four percent are high school grads or less. Some college experience is twenty nine percent. And thirty seven percent are college graduates, and that includes masters and doctorates and other postgraduate degrees. The economic situation of households has been a major pack factor in referendum all across the upper Midwest over the last eighteen months. This question does not ask what their income is. We asked them to make a calculation and think about their income and their expenses and how they're matching or not matching up. The forty four percent financially stressed is pretty much in line with what we've seen over the over twenty twenty four. The high we had since the pandemic was in the high fifties last, about last summer. So it's dropped down about ten points, which is a move in the right direction. But just for a basis, it's still higher than we were pre pandemic. Pre pandemic, the norm financially stressed was twenty six percent. So it is moving in the right direction. But still, it's about twenty points higher. Sixty nine percent lived in Green Bay, fourteen percent in Bellevue, twelve percent in Alaway and five percent are in the other communities in the school district. Eight thirty two percent were eighteen to thirty four year olds. Well, thirty six percent are fifty five and over. Typical resident is forty six years old. Women outnumbered men by two percent in the sample. And then the final set of demographics, two percent more Republican than Democrat with twenty one percent independent. And then the ethnicity of the respondent was asked sixty six percent indicated white, sixteen percent Hispanic Latino, eight percent African American, five percent indicated they were multi or biracial, four percent Asian Pacific Islander, two percent Native American. We look at some atmospherics in the district. And we've been doing this for decades. This is my thirtieth year of doing survey research and helping school districts. And the purpose of the atmospherics is really to look at the district at a macro level and see are there any issues that could rise up and and hurt a potential referendum effort? On election day, you want voters to walk into the voting booth and make a simple cost benefit analysis. What's being asked for? How much does it cost? And is that benefit worthwhile? The concern and many districts have had these issues over the years where there are atmospherics in the district, whether it's financial concerns or governance involvement, those sorts of things where people come in and vote symbolically no. So that's the purpose of the set of questions. On the overall quality of education in the district, you're right at the norm of the upper Midwest in twenty three and twenty four. Seventy eight percent rated favorably, twenty one percent only fair or poor. What do folks like most about living about the Green Bay area public schools? Well, good teachers, this is open ended. They can tell us anything. Good teachers leads the list at twenty percent. But if we do some combinations, districts fall into three categories. We see the teachers. If we look at the variety of programs in the broad curriculum, we have twenty five percent in that category of valuing what is being taught in the classroom. And then if we combine the good academics, excellent academics and highest test scores, we have twenty three percent in the category of the quality of the academics. This varies. Some districts are very driven on personnel, others on programming, other others on academic quality. Yours is basically a statistical tie. All three are are important. And it accounts for almost three quarters of what the residents value in the district. If we ask what they like most, we always follow up with what's the most serious issue facing the district. Once again, this is open ended. And so the first thing we look at, does anything hit twenty five, thirty, thirty five percent? Where one in three, one in four people are coalescing around a response? You don't have that. You have one in the low twenties, twenty one percent indicating a lack of funding. Then large class sizes at thirteen and bullying and violence is the only other that hits double digits. The other issues coming up, the closing of schools, high taxes, poor spending. The high tax piece will look a little more in depth in just a couple of slides, but that's about ten points lower than the norm. The other one that's very positive for the district is the nothing category. These folks are boosters. They see no problems in the Green Bay area public schools. Before the pandemic, the norm was about ten percent. It's dropped down to five percent. So you're three times the norm on that booster core. And these folks are supportive throughout. They rate the district highly across the board in the atmospherics category. And they're very supportive of a potential facilities funding request this fall. How does the district do in meeting the learning needs of all, most, only some or very few students? You're one of a few districts since twenty three that actually have a majority, fifty one percent say you're meeting the learning needs of all students. It's a very stringent standard. The norm on that right now is about forty percent. If we follow up with the forty eight percent, I'm sorry, yes, the forty eight percent that said most, only some or very few, that's what's the rate in the upper left hand corner of the chart. And we asked folks what type of students' learning needs are not being met. Average, struggling, underachievers and low income. And that's a pretty consistent theme that we have as a concern if residents feel in any school district that some students are being left behind. But the key takeaway on this is the fifty one percent, a majority saying the learning needs of all students are being met. What about the quality of education compared to four years ago? This is, there's a reason we put the timeframe to four years ago because we want to go back to the pandemic, not before the pandemic. Even if there are concerns on the quality of education, do they think things are moving in the right direction? And your folks absolutely believe that fifty percent say things are better. Six percent say it's worse. It's a better than eight to one ratio of people feeling positive about the direction. The norm on this right now is about three to one. Some statements we read folks and ask for them to agree or disagree. First off, does the district spend taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? Seventy three percent in the agree with that statement. Norm on that right now is fifty eight percent, so fifteen points higher than the norm. Do residents get a good value for the investment? Absolutely, more than eighty percent. Has the district spent past referendum funds responsibly? Seventy percent agree with that statement. Does the district do a good job of involving the community in decisions? That's ten points higher than the norm at seventy seven percent. Satisfaction with decision making, seventy two, twenty two. A norm on that is two to one. You're better than three to one. And then the last question is the schools are good investment and I would support a property tax increase to protect that investment. I'm always interested on this question of the disagreement. That is the core opposition in the district to any sort of funding request. What we found in successful referendums over the past eighteen months is thirty percent is the threshold. You're you're nine points lower than that. That doesn't mean that everybody's going to support. The lower that number is, the the more willingness there is to have a discussion. And it's important to understand with this question, we don't tell them if it's a facilities improvement and operating anything. It's just simply a property tax increase to understand how large the cell size is of core opposition. Job performance ratings, the school board, seventy one, twenty three, well above the norm of sixty to thirty five. Superintendent Administration, sixty nine, twenty seven. Better than the two to one ratio. And you can see that basically it's a statistical tie between the school board and the superintendent and administration. So it shows that the the community sees the governance and the administration piece as one unit. I can always tell a dysfunctional school district if the board is high, the administration is low or vice versa. You're seen as one unit and highly rated. And then the closer you get to the kids, it's always more positive. Teachers very much adored eighty five to nine. Overall assessment of the financial management in the in the district, then sixty percent favorable. A norm on this is fifty two percent. So on that financial stewardship, financial credibility, the the district does have strong reputation in the minds of residents. I mentioned property taxes and that open ended and how it was lower than the norm. And your results are different than what we see elsewhere since twenty twenty two. What happened in twenty twenty two is people got their assessments and their house went up twenty, twenty five percent and they were thrilled. Not a lot of people figured out what that was going to do to their property tax statement come November. And so November of twenty twenty two, property tax hostility exploded. It's come down a little bit, but the norm in the high category right now is about fifty five percent. You're at only thirty five percent indicating that they think their taxes are high. Thirty eight percent think their school taxes are high. So that's, once again, this does not mean that they'll support everything. It means they're willing to have a conversation. When that number goes high, one community over here in Minnesota in the past few months had seventy seven percent in the very high and somewhat high category. That doesn't even get to the point of having a discussion because it's reflexively no. Is the district adequately funded? No, the majority of residents do not believe the district is majority is adequately funded. Thirty eight percent believe that it is. Turning to buildings and facilities needs, sixty nine percent indicate that they believe the buildings and facilities meet the needs of educating today's students. Twenty six percent indicate they do not. The no category is about ten points higher than we typically see. It's normally somewhere between ten and fifteen percent. You do have twenty six percent disagreeing with the statement. And those that agree with the statement, it's soft agreement. It's fifty nine with ten percent saying strongly yes. So a discussion, there is an understanding of the community in the community of the necessity of more improvements that need to be made in order to meet the needs of educating today's children. And in the conversation, you know, it's important to link back and think about what they value. They value the teachers, but they also value the programming and the academic quality. And so in messaging communication, the theme should be about what these updates will continue to do to enhance the students' experience. What's their predisposition? If they heard the district was going to ask for a referendum, are they for all? Are they against all or are they persuadable? You actually start out with two percent more support, core support than core opposition, twenty six, twenty four. But the majority of of the residents are in the persuadable category. It will matter what's being asked for. We ask folks to understand their tax tolerance. Twenty four percent said nothing. They would not support any, basically a one for one. They're very consistent on this. That's below the norm of thirty five percent. That's the threshold we're looking for. Well below that. Once again, there's a willingness for this conversation. If they pick amount, they pick an amount, where do they land? Twenty two percent say five dollars, twenty five percent say ten dollars. And then we have twenty two percent at fifteen dollars or more. If we take out the nothing and there's those that are going, willing to accept a property tax increase, it starts out, the tolerance is about ten dollars a month. But what always matters, it's what's being asked for. We did test the consolidation question because obviously there's lots of discussion. It'd be, you know, there are a few things in all my years of doing this, it's school attendance boundaries, start times and consolidation. Are very hot button and very difficult issues for school boards. The overall understanding and support or opposition for the consolidation, seventy one percent support, twenty two percent oppose. If we look at intensity, there's not a lot, only twenty one percent in the community feels strongly one way or the other. But it falls two to one for strong support versus strong opposition. Once we understood what their position was, we followed up with the opponents. That's the twenty two percent. And asked, would you still oppose consolidating elementary schools if you knew the school district would save operating funds that could be invested into more school resources to support students? At that point, fifty percent said they would not, they would, they would not oppose anymore. So the core opposition on the consolidation is about eleven percent in the district. We went through a long series of potential uses of 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 in a facilities request and asked folks would they support a property tax increase for for each of these. You can see there is overwhelming support across the board. We don't have anything that hits, you know, forty or fifty percent opposition. The lowest amount of support you have is sixty seven percent for the construction of the new elementary school. Safety and security has led every list on bond referendum that I've done well over, you know, well into the hundreds over the past few few years on this. And that is by no means a reflection that they feel that the children aren't safe and secure. What's happened since Sandy Hook and Newtown, Connecticut is residents will never you can never be too safe when we're talking safety and security. That leads every list. But across the board, from eighty three to sixty seven percent, strong support. That leads every list, but across the board uh from eighty-three to sixty-seven percent strong support. We asked folks then, when you hear about the the ideas for improvements, they sound like a good idea or a bad idea. Seventy-seven percent indicate good idea, only twenty percent say bad idea. And it's a three to one good idea strongly versus bad idea strongly. We asked folks about the uh, the sticker price of two hundred and twenty-five million for all the projects that we discussed in the previous list. And this is a little bit unique. I've done referendums from a million dollars for a district. Uh, the largest we helped pass last year was four hundred and ninety-five million. It really doesn't matter what the amount is. People think about what's being asked for and does it sound reasonable? And typically, it's fifty percent say yes and fifty percent say no. You actually have, people really do see there's value in the amount of projects being asked for and the price of two hundred and twenty-five million. But at the end of the day, what always matters, it's not the total price, it is how much it costs them. And and residents were told the statement um at the time. And read it specifically. Um, due to expiring debt, there would likely be no property tax rate increase if the facility referendum passed. With that information, seventy-four percent support, twenty-three percent opposed and strong support is three times strong opposition. We asked folks the reason for their support or their opposition. Twenty-seven percent said education's important. Well, twenty-five percent pointed to no tax increase. Um, it will be important over the course of the discussion this fall uh to talk about need. Um, and to drive that point, that at the end of the day is what weighs heavily in people's minds and support. What about opposition? Well, poor district spending, no children, don't close schools was only four percent. Taxes too high, two percent want the tax decrease. And I typically don't put a one percent response uh on a chart. But I wanted you to see those that make the need calculation. Uh, it's twelve percent to one percent uh in favor of that these are needed. And then finally, where are folks getting their information? The new, this is open-ended, the newsletter at twenty-five percent, twenty percent the website. Word of mouth, local newspaper and social media all tie at eleven percent. Then the e-newsletter, teacher, staff, email, local television and local radio. How do folks prefer to receive their information? On this one, I always tell clients, look at it, do you want to push communications or pull communications? Do you want print? You wanna hold something in your hand? Thirty percent indicate mail newsletter, forty percent indicate the newspaper. Do they wanna push a button on on a device? Eighteen percent say the website, fifteen percent social media, twelve percent email, seven percent e-newsletter. So you do have fifty-two percent in that category. It tips a little bit in preference towards electronic. Uh, but it's forty percent for prints also, and there are very specific demographics associated with each of those categories. And then finally, we just went through a list and we asked folks, do you get a lot of information? Some, not too much, or none at all from that source. What's the rate on the chart is the old, the a lot and the sum. What leads for impact is the newsletter with thirty-one percent indicating they get a lot of information. What leads for reach is the informal discussions with friends and neighbors at fifty-two percent. So the grapevine is alive and lush. It's a secondary source, not primary for folks. Um, and that's typically what we're seeing right now. And especially as newspapers either, you know, disappear or they don't cover districts and local government like they used to. Uh, there tends to be more of a reliance on the grapevine um than any other source of information. So I think I'd just quick sum up. Um, overall, uh, with the atmospherics in the district as we walk through, um, things look very positive. The district, there's a lot of goodwill when we look at the governance, the administration, the financial management. The involvement uh involving the community and what have you. Um, the referendum, I understand it was scaled back to lesser than the two hundred and twenty-five million. But with a strong communications effort, um, and that's what this will be about this fall. This isn't an off-year election uh where it's all about turnout. Turnout's baked into the cake. Um, it's all about communication because a surprise voter is a no voter on election day. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody wanna start it off? Andrew, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. I um I have one. I I'm just wondering, when you say a, when you say a ninety-three point five percent response rate, um I'm familiar with other types of polling. I'm just wondering if you say those words and I think of it as a different thing because certainly ninety-three point five percent of people don't even, is this people who picked up their phones? And then ninety-three point five percent continued because you you can't get any. If it was, I mean, people don't pick up for their mom, ninety-three point five percent of, I I do. But I mean, people don't write ninety-three, five is, okay, so that means, that means six and a half quit or refused.
Yes. Okay, that's, yeah, that that that's that, that's it. But then, yeah, actually, my mother just called while I was doing the presentation, so I did not respond to her at this time either. Nobody answers their phone the first time, uh, which is why we spend two weeks in the field with it. We're not like the polling companies that you see, um, all the ones that bathe the industry in uh, not good light, uh, where they make, they call their samples in two nights, talk to whoever answers their phone. Have a response rate of ten percent and then reweight their data. I set quotas, I understand what the makeup of the district is. Um, and we call folks, we leave, we leave voicemails, we explain who we are, they're part of a random sample. We will call you back. Um, obviously, especially with families, the last thing you wanna do is bias the sample against those with an active lifestyle. So if the resident says, I can't take it right now, I'm taking the kid into football practice, we'll say, great, when can, when is it convenient? And we do, we complete, we complete over fifty percent of the uh surveys by appointment. So when it's convenient for the person to take the survey, not when it's convenient for us to do the survey. Um, and that's the important part of this because I did not wanna bias the sample against those with an active lifestyle.
Right, now that makes sense. And the um, where I could see where uh just a a grinded-out operation would just you know, uh, auto, well, to whatever extent, you can still do some of those methods anymore. Um next, 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 and just grind it till you get your your answers. So I do, I do understand that. And I think um and it looks like from what what I could tell, having studied the demographics of the district a lot for many years, it it looks like you're uh aided by having the right quotas, but um, looks like you got the right um certainly looks like a good, good cross-section uh to me. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Uh, can you please repeat the question that was asked under the bond referendum? That you read verbatim what the question was asked to the respondent about tax impact? Can you just re- repeat that?
Yep. Uh, due to expiring debt, there would likely be no property tax rate increase if the facilities referendum passed. And then the question is if the election were today, would you support or oppose this facility referendum?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Co.
Peter, these uh, these information are great and um, I I think your team did a tremendous job on it. But I I'm curious, Green Bay has uh multiple zip codes, uh, these six hundred and twenty-five random um individuals, are they all spread out through the Green Base, the city of Green Bay, or is it concentrated in certain parts of Green Bay?
It 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 is throughout. I I did keep track of ward and precinct uh just to make sure it's distributed. But I just collapsed it down at the end with the area. I actually, most people don't know what ward or precinct they live in. Uh, but with the list that um, that I use the database that has every resident in the district. Cell phones, landlines, all of it. Um, so I control that. I I know where they live.
So it's not concentrated at one particular zip code, it's pretty much spread out through Green Bay, that's what you say.
Cor- correct, yeah. A- as as at at the, on the demographics I shared. It was uh sixty-nine percent lived in the city. Fourteen percent Bellevue, twelve percent Alaway, and five percent in other areas of the district.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Um, I I just wanna say that this this in- information is um, I don't wanna exaggerate here, but it 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 reframes from, just speaking for myself, it reframes sort of how I, how, how I was thinking around how our district is perceived in our larger community. Um and I, it in a, in a beneficial way. Um, like I, I'm, I'm really, there's a lot of good news in this study and um sometimes it's hard for us to know exactly how our district is perceived in our larger community. Um and the thing that really stood out to me was also how well-perceived our teachers are. This is just like, I I'm, I'm tempted to like stand up and hoop and holler about that. That just feels like um, the best news. So uh I'm gonna spend some time with this data and um and and, you know, try to take it in a little bit more fully, but um boy, what a, what a great report.
I I do, I do make a joke, but I'm half-serious. I probably couldn't have retired ten years ago, but maybe five years ago. When I say if I had a nickel for every elected official that said that the survey results do not reflect what they hear. Um, I would have been retired. Um, because it, let's face it, you you hear from the ten percent that are upset. You might hear from the ten percent of boosters. And then the vast majority of people are just living their lives. You know, nobody goes on a website for a restaurant review and says that was a good meal. They'll go on and say it was the worst one ever, or it might have been the greatest one ever. Um, this kind of just takes it out of that and ref- and it shows uh elected officials and administrations where the community is as a whole.
Well, it's a kind of a testament to human nature. Um, you know, to that that we didn't, we don't always know how we're perceived and and um that there's plenty of people out there that are uh, for all the people that we hear are unhappy, there's, there's many, many more who um are are very happy. So, and that's a comfort. That's good to know. So, is there any other, are there any other questions or observations? Anything else for Peter? All right, I think we're finished with that then. Thank you. Thank you so much.
It was a pleasure. Be well, everyone.
Yep, bye now. Bye now. Okay, um, I think we're gonna have Kale back and he's gonna talk about our clean energy advisory committee update.
Hello again. So um, we have re-initiated uh now with the transition from myself to Josh, our clean energy committee uh meetings. Um, I apologize, this did come up quickly um for everyone. Um as I've learned um about the um requirement to get a recommendation to the board by December um to be car- fifty percent carbon neutral by twenty thirty-five, I believe. Um that uh made this a little more difficult um as far as scheduling meetings. Um, so we did have to turn the initial meeting around quickly. Um, so working with our partners, um, who I believe um were um presented to to the board McKinstry. Um, helping us with the process um of this goal of a hundred percent carbon neutral by twenty fifty. Um, we put together um a set of workshops um to get our committee up to speed. Um, and then also understand what we need to get um together for a recommendation for the board to achieve these goals. Um, so with that, we've condensed um a set of five workshops into three meetings. Um, and then additionally, we'll be looking at scheduling a fourth meeting um before December um to build that recommendation and then bring that to the board. Um with um that plan in December. Um so this first meeting, um, and as you all see too, I've also now included um all board members on the meetings moving forward. I will continue um for all energy meetings um to invite um all board members as well. Um, hopefully, we can get into a regular cadence um after these workshops. Um that that works for the entire team. Um, so the first workshop um that we, we did, so like I said, these are consolidated. Uh, typically, there would be five. We're gonna do this in three. Uh, the next two meetings um will combine uh two of the workshops. The first one, um, energy and carbon accounting best practices. Um, so in this meeting, um, other than the workshop, we also did kind of reiterate what that goal is um for the twenty thirty-five um recommendation. And then um went through a quick overview of the five workshops. Um, and then also revisited the resolution um to kind of ground ourselves back at what that looked like. Um, and then we dove right into the first workshop. Um, the meeting minutes have been posted on the website, you can see that. Um and then also if um any board member wants to see the slide deck we went through for that first workshop, I can certainly share that out as well.
Kale, would you just go ahead and and email that link to everybody so like everyone can look at it at their leisure?
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so with just a high level over um of this workshop now. There was discussion about um kind of can some consensus on some thoughts. And I assume that's gonna continue through these workshops. Um, but again, decisions aren't really made um for the recommendation at this point. Um, at this point, we're just trying to move along these workshops. Uh, reconvene in that fourth meeting and really put all those thoughts together um to get back for that recommendation. Um, so this first one, um, like I said, the accounting best practices. Um, basically, a high-level overview of carbon, um greenhouse gases, what that looks like. Um, and then as far as the accounting best practices. The first one we went through was um how are we tracking our goal? Um, best practices presented a annual uh year-over-year um review of our carbon footprint. The best practice recommendation was a baseline approach to that, which we also reviewed. Um, and some heavy discussion on a timeframe for that baseline. Um, a lot of discussion about pre-COVID um as more of a regular ye- um as far as um energy usage. Um, so there's a lot of discussion about that of trying, trying to track when that best start was. Um then we moved into organizational boundary, which is essentially what are we tracking? Um, what facilities are we tracking? Um, which was a pretty clear cut for our district, um identifying all the buildings we own and rent. Um, so at this point, there's really not a, not a lot of discussion on that. That was pretty straightforward. Um, so we identified that. Um, and then the third piece that we um discussed, and this one certainly took the longest, was our operational boundary. Um, so this was broken down into different scopes. Um, and that went into exactly what items are we tracking? And breaking them down, um, like I said, they said scopes, um three scopes. Um, more of that detail is certainly in that slide deck. Um but the first one being um onsite combustion, uh combustion, um fuel such as gas, propane, um oil. Um, gas or electric, right? So um whether that's from us or third uh third party. Um, another scope, then uh facility. And then um oh, sorry, as I mentioned, the purchased electricity, um as far as that goes. Um, a couple other ones that were reviewed were um transportation. Um, in our case, being third-party, uh reviewing the implications of how are we tracking um bus transportation with a third-party. Um, so a lot of discussion around that and whether or not um it would be feasible to track that at this time, being that's um, that is a contract, uh, for, for our district. Um, and then there's a few other minor categories and, um, when I say minor, they were, were percentage points of kind of our overall energy consumption. Um, things like water, uh, waste, uh, refrigerant, um, and discussion around that was, um, the effort in tracking those, um, versus kind of the payback of that, that carbon impact, um, was relatively minor. Um, and potentially looking at different initiatives to track that kind of thing, especially I think waste was a good example of that. Um, could we have initiatives to reduce our waste, um, um, for other reasons other than strictly carbon? So with all that, there was, I will say, um, I, I was, um, happy to see there was some, some really good consensus. I think everyone kind of going the same direction, um, after some really good discussion. So I, I think it was a very productive meeting, um, and, and I'd like, uh, would like to say thank McKinstry of really putting together a good presentation. It was succinct and allowed us for some good discussion and move the conversation along. So we can meet that goal of getting that recommendation in front of this group. And then, um, yep. Finally, the next workshop I'll just mention, um, coming up on September 3rd, um, which you should all now have an invite to. Um, we have Energy Efficiency, Efficiency Program Operations and Energy Infrastructure Capital Projects. One last note, um, it was all also emphasized, um, that our current tracking, accounting and projects that we have been working as a district, McKinstry commented on, um, kind of praise to our district for what we're currently doing with our building controls and energy projects. Um, they believe we have a good jumpstart on this. Um, so feasibility for reaching some of our goals, um, at this time, uh, still appear achievable, um, and we're fairly confident in that. Um, but that goes back years of, um, an emphasis on this type of work. Um, so that was good to hear as well, that, that we're not really starting, um, from a bad spot. We're starting from a very good spot. Any questions?
Brian.
I was pleased to be the, uh, board representative on the first meeting that we had when Josh was here. So this is actually our second meeting talking about this. And I just want to share with the board, I will not be able to attend those last two fall. It's just very busy and those dates do not work well. So if anyone else is, can definitely be there. Appreciate this, this, this is a topic that's very close to me and your discussion continued with what the work was being done before. So really looking into where we see the gains that we can make, how we can really actually measure it is, is good to see. So thank you.
Go ahead.
Thanks for the update. And you might not know this answer yet, but I'm interested in when you come back in December, what's the nature of the recommendation? Is it going to be a discrete project list? Or what, what does the committee intend to create as far as a recommendation that looks out 10 years across referendum cycles, et cetera?
Um, it's fair. I, I don't have that complete answer yet. Um, I will say it won't be completely project-based. It won't just be a capital project list that we bring to you that we have to execute X, Y, and Z to meet that. Um, there's different paths to this, and that's what really this workshop, these workshops will lay out kind of that roadmap of how you can do that. Much like I stated, some of the, um, building controls and things we do, how we operate facilities. But certainly capital projects will be a part of that, but not the entire thing. Uh, McKinstry was clear to, to state that as well in the meetings. Um, and then just Brian, too, I can share out all, um, of these workshop slide decks as well. Um, so even though you can't attend, I can make sure that I'll just send those out, um, no matter what, um, um, uh, once we have those.
Yeah, I mean, maybe not all board members can attend, but they can, you know, some will, and it, it, it's just a matter of if they, if they have the time, but seeing those slide decks will definitely help. So, anybody else? Brian?
I also recognize that the members of the committee that were there before, and I'm sure they're still a lot of the same people, are really good at what they do. Like they are really digging into the information and advocating for things that are outside of the box, but really know what they're doing with it. So looking at the email list, I'm very confident that my concerns will be addressed as well.
Yeah. Anybody else? I think, um, as a district, it's, it's, it's good to celebrate and be reminded, like you just mentioned about how much we've already done as a district and how, um, you know, saving energy has been a part of our, um, strategy for years and years. So, um, starting from a good place is, is, uh, thank you for reminding us of that. That's, that's important for the public to know that December, um, deadline is, I remember when they talked about it last spring, thinking that's really aggressive. Um, and they were confident that they could achieve it, but, and it sounds like they will. But, um, it's, it's going to be an intense fall for that committee, um, to, to, to meet that goal. And I'm really, really looking forward to hearing what they recommend. Um, uh, our, our district leads in this area and I love that about our district. Um, and, um, I just, another thing to celebrate tonight. So, thank you very much. Okay. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Uh, would someone like to read the motion?
Move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Laura, are you able to vote online?
It's not coming up. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm a yes.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, I'm going to get out and get back in so that I can, because we're going to take some other votes here and I don't know if I'm, just give me a moment, please. All right, I think I should be good now. All right. So we're going to, um, head into a period of voting here on our action items. Um, for those who are watching at home or in the audience here, these are items that we talked about, um, in our last meeting, um, our work session earlier in the month. So if it looks like we're just voting, um, randomly on things, that's actually not true. We, we've already had a fair amount of discussion and, and, and on these, we might have some more tonight as well. But, um, uh, this is the meeting where we vote on these, on these subjects. So, um, all right. So we're going to, um, head into a, the approval of the Head Start Program Guidelines. Would someone please read that motion?
Move that the changes to the Head Start Program Guidelines and Operational Procedures Handbook, including selection criteria for the 2024-2025 program and changes to the Policy Council Bylaws. The 2024-2025 program year, as presented, be approved.
All right. Questions or discussion on this? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Next is semi-annual budget transfers. Would someone like to read that motion, please?
I moved it to recommended action that in accordance with the provisions of Wisconsin Statute 65.90, uh, parentheses, five, parentheses, A, the adopted changes to the previously approved 2023-24 budget amounts as presented be approved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any question? I see Angie's available if anybody wants to, um, would like to, uh, ask any questions about this? Right. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Recommendation for revision to employee handbook language. Would someone read the motion, please?
I moved that the revisions to Board Education Policy 383.2, curricular dogs in the school setting as presented be approved. Sorry. I apologize. I move that the recommendations for revision to the employee handbook language as presented be approved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. What questions? Brian?
This isn't a question, but more of a comment. Um, this district has had a good and continues to have a strong working relationship with different groups, including educators. And I think the survey shows the community supports our educators on there. And I just wanted to stress, I think it's important that we continue that relationship, especially when we're looking at provisions to the handbook and that communication continues to take place. I don't have any inkling that it hasn't, but we have a lot on our plate, which we usually do. And I want to just make sure that that, as an individual board member, I stress the fact that I want that to continue. So.
Thank you. Anybody else? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. The next one is coups.
Recommend a motion that the revision to, uh, School Board of Education Policy 383 dot point two, curriculum, uh, curricular dogs in the school setting as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions? Comments? Go ahead.
This is very exciting. I want to thank Melissa for finding the policies for this work its way through with the concerns that we had earlier. I know I will probably be getting a text from someone shortly asking if they can bring their curricular dog through and reminding them that it hasn't been approved until we approve it. So. And they need to follow the policy and this isn't just a bunch of dogs showing up at school. So.
So that would be nice, but, but not allowed. Um, okay. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Would someone read the next motion, please?
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policies and Rules 411.1, 411.11, 511 and 512, as the, as a result of the effective 2024 Title IX Regulations as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions? Any concerns? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Let's have him read the next motion, please.
Move that the revisions to the Board of Education Policies and Rules in the 300 and 400 series policies relates to people services, special education and multilingual learners as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions? Discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Let's have him read the next motion under G.
I move that the Board of Education Policy 342.11 Independent Education Evaluations as presented be approved.
Second.
All right. Questions? Discussion? Okay. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right. Let someone read the motion under H. Oh, put your, yep.
I moved that the revisions to Board of Education Policies and Rules in the 300 and 400 series policies related to teaching and learning as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. That completes our regular agenda. And with that, um, would someone please read the motion to go into closed session, please?
I move that the board adjourned into closed session.
Can you read a little bit closer to your microphone?
Sure.
There we go.
I move that the Board of Education adjourned into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Section 1C, considering the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to wit interim superintendent contract.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Kinsey? Lee?
Yes.
Yes.
Gerlach?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Lyerly?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. We are adjourned into closed session.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the access If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.